The Jackson Public School Board Meeting is now called to order. Board members, we have five members present. Ms. Hilliard is on the line. Mr. Figures will be joining us momentarily and Dr. Luckett will, is unable to be with us tonight. We have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll move.
Second?
Mrs. Thompson has moved. Dr. Harrison is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the October 18, 2022, regular board meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Harrison has moved. Mrs. Thompson is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And with that, we are on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Green.
Thank you, Dr. Sevak. We'll begin as we typically do with our highlights reel from the instructional television crew.
Celebration at Span Elementary School where scholars sang and educators received special recognition for enriching the JPS educational curriculum.
The educators have remained committed to inspiring their students and sparking that joy of lifelong learning.
You celebrate our children. You provide resources for us to go a little deeper and a little farther.
The Junior League of Jackson, in partnership with the Community Foundation of Mississippi, awarded 22 grant proposals at 13 Jackson Public Schools. A trust fund of over $100,000 that will focus on early literacy, children's health, and social development. And as part of Red Ribbon Week, leading up to Halloween, JPS scholars at Cardoza Middle School listened to sobering words about the danger of drugs from Hines County Sheriff Tyree Jones.
I'm here to talk to you all about awareness, some of the prevention and some of the things that you all need to be aware of. It takes advantage of your body and it impairs your brain.
Scholars asked questions, got answers, and got to see a K-9 officer in action. Recognition and awards for hundreds of JPS high school scholars.
We recognize over 300 JPS scholars who scored advanced on Algebra I, English II, Biology I, and U.S. History.
We celebrate the outstanding scholastic accomplishments of all of you scholars. We celebrate our core value of excellence in action.
I cannot wait to once again, you all, wear...
Yeah!
Number one!
What's the number one elementary school in the state of Mississippi? Obama Magnet, where scholars, teachers, administrators, and dignitaries celebrated this academic achievement.
It was always about the kids. It was always about the teachers. But now, we're all involved. Let's keep this train going. Let's go back-to-back. Obama Magnet Strong.
For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools, on Twitter at JPS District, Comcast Channels 18 and 19, and YouTube at www.youtube.com/JPSITV.
Thank you, team. Board members, I only have a few remarks that I want to share with you. I do want to just underscore all the wonderful things that are happening that we just saw in the video. There are lots of celebrations of our scholars and wonderful work that they're doing. Obviously, wonderful work that our team members continue to do. They make it look so easy on the videos and that, and just want to acknowledge all the smart people doing such smart and caring work. A couple of announcements or remarks, as I stated. First, board members, as you know, we've experienced some ongoing challenges with low water pressure in various parts of the city, or no pressure in various parts of the city. And due to the low water pressure at Forest Hill High School, we've had to adjust our program for quite some time, including as up to yesterday and today. Today, we actually, you may have seen the advisement that we were able to bring some scholars back into the building because of the low pressure, not completely without pressure. And to do a hybrid, excuse me, a hybrid program with some scholars, a couple of the grade levels in the building and others still home, learning virtually. Well, thankfully, thankfully, the city of Jackson has completed some necessary repairs and we are able to bring the water pressure back. They were able to bring the water pressure back up to a steady and strong level. And so, Forest Hill High School scholars will return to the building tomorrow, November 2nd, and return for the full program. And we're just excited to welcome them back strong. And we know we've got some work to do bringing them back into the building, but we're excited to bring them back. And so, we're celebrating that. It's the small things that are not so small in the reality. My second set of remarks, board members, is just a, I'm full, full of joy and pride for so many reasons, and most recently because of our team members showing up and showing out in Atlanta at the National Education Leaders Workshop. I was honored to serve as the keynote speaker and sharing a bit about and really just bragging on our team and our district, talking about our transformation efforts and our progress to date. And as much as I appreciated the opportunity to represent our district, I was incredibly proud of Team JPS for all of the contributions that were made across the two-day convening. Dr. Kimberly Smith, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Wanda Clark, our Director of Instructional Support Services, and Latoya Blackshear, the Director of Data and Accountability facilitated a powerful session that I got to sit in. I'd seen bits and pieces of it previously, but a powerful session focused on acceleration strategies to increase student achievement and using data strategically and goal-setting to improve instructional outcomes. As well, Dr. Tommy Knowles, the Director of Recruitment facilitated a great session on recruitment and retention. I will tell you, folks have come up, folks that I've known from other districts came up to me and said, "I know Dr. Tommy Knowles and I'm so excited to be reconnected with him and the work that he's doing and leading in your district and y'all rock." I heard that for two straight days. Y'all rock, y'all rock, y'all rock. And of course, I was like, "Yes, we do. Thank you." But yeah, they just did a wonderful job. But in addition to the formal presentations that some of us made at the conference, others who attended just really showed up in their comments and their questions and just the ways that they engaged. And so, it was very clear that Jackson Public Schools was front and center throughout the, we were featured. And folks were referencing things that, from our presentations and work that we've done. And so, our story and our work was center stage at the convening. And we received so many accolades and so much encouragement and appreciation for our work. And so, we are indeed transforming Jackson Public Schools, and the impact of our work is moving beyond the local context to the national stage. People are listening and they're watching, and I'm confident that our scholars and our families and communities will continue to reap the benefits of this broader impact that we're making, not just here in Jackson, but across the state and across the country. I want to ask for all of those who were able to participate and were a part of that convening Thursday and Friday of this past week, if you'd please stand and be recognized because I think folks need to know just how powerful a presence we were in, at the conference.
Dr. Green, this is wonderful, wonderful. Congrats to all of our team. Could you share with us the title of this conference?
Yes.
So we can look it up and smile ourselves.
Indeed, indeed. It was the, let me get it right, the National Education Leaders Workshop. National Education Leaders Workshop. And it's actually one that's sponsored by Insight Education Group. And so, obviously, you know, with their deep entrenchment and engagement with our district, they wanted to help to elevate and amplify our voices and the work that's happening here. We've been asking for, and I don't know if they have recordings of the sessions, but you know, again, JPS was on center stage. I didn't realize going in just how much of our story would be amplified there, but we were center stage. And so, I've spent the entire time just super proud and receiving the accolades on behalf of the team here. So, just wanted to let you know of that proud moment, those proud moments, and of course, let our team know that our story is not just a local story. It really is a national story. With that, Dr. Sevak, board members, it concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Well, congratulations again. Very exciting news. And one thing about Insight and that group, Insight was the group that managed the kind of assessment of the district right before you came even, and is involved in turnaround efforts all over the country. So to lift up JPS in that space speaks volumes to the work of you and your team. And so, thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Next, we move to our public comment section of the board meeting. I don't believe we have any public comments. I'll just remind the public that community members who would like to make public comments should email their request to roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting, or appear in person in the boardroom no later than 5:15 on the day of the meeting. With that, we'll move on to our information-only section of the meeting, and we have our monthly bond update. So I'll invite Ms. Sandra Robinson, our Executive Director of Facilities and Operations. And I also believe...
Lena Franklin.
Lena Franklin as well. And what's Ms. Franklin's title?
Construction Director.
Construction Director in property. Thank you.
Rio Property.
Rio Property. Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Okay, Mrs. Robinson.
Good evening, Dr. Sevak, board members, Dr. Green. At the first board meeting of each month, we have the pleasure of presenting the bond update. In tonight's presentation, we'll review the construction updates, the bond financial report, and the timeline for completion. We've actually reformatted the presentation a little bit, and Ms. Franklin is going to conduct the presentation, as she has done so well this year, or these past two years. And then, I'll follow up with any questions and answers. Ms. Franklin?
Okay, good evening, board members. We'll start, as we usually do, we'll take a look at our construction progress. We'll start at our Hardy Hughes Athletic Complex. We're still making some progress there. I don't know if you recall, in October, we did have some setbacks due to weather, but we have made some progress here in the parking lot. The curb and gutters have all been poured for the parking lot. And the photo on the left, you see the concrete drives. The photo on the right is they're preparing the drive for our buses. Also, adjacent to our new parking lot, contractors have started excavating for our new baseball field. There's also some drainage improvements going on in the same location. And north of the baseball field, on the northwest corner, is our softball field for our girls. Now, we'll take a look at the budget for both of these projects. Hughes Field is actually being funded by our bond revenue. And if you all recall, we did have $65 million for the bond, and then, we were able to raise an additional $5 million in premium, as well as an additional $2.5 million in interest. So those funds are what allowed us to do Hughes Field, the improvements to the football field. And allocated on the bond fact sheet was $1 million to our baseball and softball complex. Now, the actual bid amounts came in much higher. Hughes Field came in at an amount of $6.6 million. Expended to date, we spent about $5,900,000, and we have a remaining nine hun, about $900,000 left. And for our baseball field, we've just started this project. The actual bid amount for it was $4,629,000. And like I said, we've just started. We haven't paid any payments to the contractor, but that $4 million is encumbered. Next, on the campus of Forest Hill High School, we still have two projects in progress there. Here, we're looking at the exterior improvements to our JRTC building. All of the exterior brick has been re-pointed, so any loose brick has been replaced and all the mortar redone. The exterior of the building has also been painted, and we've gotten all-new exterior Interior-wise, we've upgraded all the wiring for the lighting, mechanical, ductwork, all of that is new. New ceilings in every room, all-new flooring, new interior doors. And we've provided some new places, new spaces for our JRTC. They have a drill room, an exercise room, six classrooms, and four offices. Next, we see the photo on the left, that's a new trophy case that's going in for the JRTC. And on the right is the new millwork in the employee lounge area. Also at Forest Hill, we have our performing arts spaces, and this project included upgrades to our band, band space. It included renovating those restrooms, new carpet, new flooring there, renovating two art classrooms, and here in the auditorium. The auditorium's received all-new lighting, stage lighting, audience lighting, new flooring, new seating. Here, we see in the photo on the left, that's our orchestra pit. And the photo on the right, we've gotten all-new stage flooring, stage lighting. Now, we can talk about the costs for these projects at Forest Hill. The overall allocated amount for Forest Hill on the bond fact sheet was $8.1 million. And the performing arts space was bid separately, and the actual bid amount for that project was $1.7 million, and expended to date is about $1.5 million. So we have about $189,000 remaining to finish up that project. And the JRTC renovation allocated on the bond fact sheet was $1 million. The actual bid amount came in at $1.3 million, and expended to date, we spent about $1.1 million, and left is $207,000. And both of these projects are expected to complete in December of this year. Next, we'll take a look at our overall finances for our overall bond project. Expended plus encumbered is up to 94%. We're up, expended to 81%, which is up 1% from last month's bond report. And still remaining or unencumbered is $3.9 million. And the next three slides just give us a balance left at each school and show the breakdown of what we spent at every school site. And that completes, that completes everything. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Board members, Dr. Harrison?
I don't have any questions or concerns. I just want to give a shout-out to Ms. Franklin and, I'm having a brain...
Problems?
Because they did come to our Ward 5 community meeting, and it was very well-received. And thank you so much for taking that extra time out to talk with us about that.
Awesome.
No problem. Thank you.
I had to say, I did have one question. Just looking through the school-by-school list, if some of MacLeod still had a fairly large outstanding balance, what is that for?
Actually, that's, we have done some informal bids at MacLeod, and we have a project that's ready to bid, and any additional funds, I think we're going to do it as in, is that one of our ESER projects?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So MacLeod and AIPAC will be supplemented by our ESER funding, because both, we had to rebid due to the escalation in cost, and it was above the project budget that we had. And as you saw, some of the project budgets were more than what we expected four years ago when we did the bond referendum. Of course, inflation and supply chain, supply chain problems have escalated prices.
Great. And what were those improvements? I remember, I remember when we had to rebid AIPAC Performing Arts Space, but I was, I couldn't remember what the MacLeod ones were.
Okay. So MacLeod was going to be window replacements, door replacements. We are currently doing the roof repairs right now, and are redoing any restroom renovations as well.
Great. Thank you. All right. Thank you. We look forward to the next report.
Thank you.
All right. And next, we have our review of our annual audit for fiscal year ended June 30, 2021. Mr. Earl Burke, our Chief Operations Officer, will share this information.
Good afternoon, board, President Sevak, other board members, Dr. Green, audience. The Office of Finance and Operations wants to provide some time to Fontenberry and Ballard to come and give you a summary review of our annual audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2021. As he comes up, I'll just, there were some questions. Once he does his presentation, I'll fill in some of those answers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is, as Mr. Burke mentioned, this is your fiscal year ended June 30, 2021 report, and I think you have a few select pages that I've chosen to share with you here. First and foremost, on pages four through six is just the audit opinion. That's a clean opinion, unqualified or unmodified opinion. Just basically means that the financial statements, as you see them here, are fairly presented in all material respects, and there are no exclusions or extra things that need to explain anything about the presentation of the financial statements as they are seen here. Also, I wanted to just briefly bring your attention on page 18 is the statement of net position. That statement and the one across the page is the, what we call the government-wide presentation. But I just always want to draw board members' eyes to this large liability that we began having to put on your statements from the pension liability and the other, other post-employment benefits, being your life and health liability. About three-quarters way down the page, you see net pension liability of $403 million and the OPEB liability of $23 million. So those are very large figures that a national standard, accounting standard required us to begin putting them on every local entity's presentation in 2015. So that's something that everyone's dealing with nationwide, and as you can see, that's the, that's the main reason that you have a negative net position down there, is because you've had to drop those large liabilities into the picture here. Absent those liabilities, you would, you would be in a $11, $12 million positive picture. So that's, that's something I always want to bring, bring to board members' attention, that's a national thing. We really can't, can't do anything about that as a presentation issue that governmental accounting standards board requires. Page 67, I believe is the next page that I wanted to draw your attention to, and that, that is simply just the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And as you know, the COVID funding and the ESER funding this year were, were big, a big part of your federal dollars. We had $7.3 million in COVID relief funds. You see that middle of the page there. And then, on down the page, you see the ESER funds that were $8.8 million. So roughly, you know, you had $16 million added to this schedule, which is a, a big chunk of funds that's coming on to your schedule. So those were the two programs that we did focus in on and audit them as what they call major programs. As part of our federal audit, we have to do that. And we had no issues with the compliance aspects of those funds, and we actually have to issue a compliance opinion on those, and we had no, no problems there. Page 71 is a picture of your general fund for the last four years. It's always good to take a look at that, just to kind of see where you've been, how you're responding to decreases or increases in funding and/or expenditures. And you know, you can, you can tell, looking at those total line items, that you are responsive to, to what's happening in the revenue stream. Your expenditure stream is following, following along with that relatively easily, and you can, you can see the variations there that are going up and down, and the excess revenues over expenditures are kind of tracking along with that, that scenario. So it's always good just to know where you are with that. That's a good schedule to put your eyes on, I think, to see just to, that you're operating fund of the district and how, how it is getting along. On page 79 is, there's a couple of areas that I want to bring to your attention that are just opportunities for improvement, that the state laws and regulations that we look at, there's a couple of areas there that, that will bring to your attention there on page 80. The bonding of the purchasing agents there are supposed to be covered under individual bonds, and I think at the time, they were covered under kind of a blanket bond. So, and I think that's been resolved now as of July 1 of 2021 in the response, you can see there. Finding two just simply has to do with timely payments. There's, there's a state law that requires those payments to be done within 45 days of receipt of an undisputed invoice. And we, we had 13 cases out of 120 of our expenditure sample where that was over the 45-day period. The, the third item there is just talking about documentation and, of documenting in the board minutes that you're going over the financial statement of receipts and disbursements, investigations, and audit contracts, reviews of audit report. Those things, we just didn't see documentation of that in July to October of 2020. That's just a documentation thing, I think, that want to make sure that you're getting those cited in the board minutes. So those are some state compliance issues that are noted in that, that report. If you'll look on now to, of course, we do a lot of testing and of your internal controls surrounding your expenditures, your, all your areas where you're handling funds, bringing money in, those kind of things. We do a lot of testing there. So we did have a couple of areas we wanted to bring to your attention, just as we looked, as we sampled different areas. The first, first area there on page 84, the finding 2021-001, just has to do with internal controls surrounding documenting of separation of duties. Just making sure that the, you know, the actual approval of the, of the purchases prior receipt of goods and services and the, and the receiving of the goods and the payment for the goods, all those things, you don't want, you want to make sure you got those separated out with different individuals involved, and, and the documentation clear of who's got the responsibility for doing those different tasks. And we just felt like in the child nutrition area, that, that could be done better with, especially in the approval on the front end of that process. The, the finding at the bottom of the page there, number two, just has to do with the capital assets. When we looked at the, you know, the, the physical control of items and, you know, specifically in the, in the, the information systems, the iPads, MacBooks, those kind of things, just making sure you have a good system of identifying those and keeping track of those, and then also, when those come up, for surplus action to the board, making sure that's, that's tracking well, that you, you're getting those items documented properly on the, on the docket for, for your approval for surplus items. Those are the items that I want to bring to your attention, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
So there were some questions about the findings in relations to the accounts payable...
payable, internal controls, uh, well, in specifically related to the finding where there were one, uh, 10 out of 120 late payments. That's an accounts payable internal, uh, procedures issue. We've strengthened that process by reviewing, putting in practice to review the invoice date before payment is, is issued, specifically if the item is 45 days, uh, within 45 days. Verification that the goods and services have been received before acceptance of the final invoice. Sometimes our vendors get a little, uh, happy when we, but, we, we promised to purchase for them and they send us an invoice in advance. We need to make sure that, that, uh, we've received the goods and services and then go back and get an, a more accurate invoice date, put on that invoice to ensure that we don't have this same problem. And then request vendor, uh, update invoices outside the 45-day window based on those receipt of goods. So just ensuring that we've received the product and the service and making sure that 45-day threshold is met. Speaking to the child nutrition internal control, uh, separation duty issue, uh, the question was around the risk associated with that. I, I think it was, uh, the challenge in, in, uh, Mr. Fornberry brought this, I mean, Mr. Ballard brought this out, is that, uh, the issue was in the separation of duties. There was, as I was reviewing this, getting ready for this, I asked some questions, and it seems there have been some confusion, uh, in the prior year about, um, state contract purchasing, uh, and whether you issue a purchase order or not, and that, uh, they were ordering, but they weren't necessarily issuing a purchase order. Uh, so they, it got to be confused as to who was the final authorizer or approver of the invoice, and that should be the child nutrition, executive director of child nutrition. They were approving, they were inspecting the invoice, they were ensuring that things were, uh, accounted for, it just was the sign-off, uh, on who was the approver, and then that initial, who was the requister of the goods and service. So we've clarified that, uh, separation duty, separated that into, the exec director will sign the FOBs, that proof that the items have been received, uh, and then we'll make sure that those things are, uh, signed by the person who inspects or receives the items, and then it will workflow itself to the exec director for final signature to make sure we have the adequate controls, uh, on that. Speaking to the MacBook concern, um, there was a specific concern related to this, it's two, uh, tested sites, Galloway and Callaway. During the audit testing, they determined that Galloway and, and, Ed Cal, Galloway and Callaway, uh, MacBooks allocated to the schools could not be tracked directly down to the student. They got to the school, we could, I'm assuming they could test them to the school, but just the distrib, the distribution to the student, the items weren't put into the filet system, which is what a lot of school districts do, they, they check them out like library books, so to get to the school, to put them in the system, they're allocated to Dr. Seavack, and Dr. Seavack turns it back in, it's checked back in, as being checked back in, and then as those things become damaged or, um, lost, there's a way to print a report to, for me to send, to bring, to present to you. And I don't think there was a lot of, um, that control was, was sort of weak. We are now going to put a process in place to make sure when these assets are allocated to the schools that they are put into that library system, because I think that's the best way for us to account for them. So that has been done, and then, uh, we're working in, in conjunction with assets and property to make sure that happens. So that speaks specifically to those audit concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Burke, and thank you, Mr. Ballard. Board members, any questions? I, I do have a couple. On the MacBook, on the question of MacBooks at Galloway and Callaway, were those just two tested sites? Is this, uh, issue that's more prevalent across the district?
So those sites were, correct me if I'm mispeak, uh, those were the two tested sites. As to whether it is prevalent, we're, I will say that we are working to make sure that all of these MacBooks are put into our filet system. Uh, I couldn't speak to whether it existed because we didn't, that, that wasn't tested.
Okay, and then, um, but the, but, so there were two tested sites, and at both sites there were issues that were identified?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then, do we know where the MacBooks are right now?
Uh, yes, maybe. So I'm gonna give you a yes and a maybe. I think we found them, I just don't know where they are, uh, if they were lost, they, I don't think they've been presented to you as disposable yet.
I guess part of what I'm asking is, um, have they gone missing? We obviously expended money on them, have they gone missing? It sounds like we don't have a mechanism to go find them if they have.
Right.
Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Do we know how many?
I do not.
Okay.
But I will, I will get you an answer to that question.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and the other question, I was, actually, I didn't send this one in advance, but this was one that just spent a little bit more time with the numbers. If, if we look at page 71, this is, this, some of this is, Dr. Green is actually just, um, looking ahead at the, uh, sorry, it's, it's on the, it's, it's, it's in the packet you sent out, but it's 71. It's the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances last four years.
Yes.
That's the one.
Mm-hmm.
So, Dr. Green, some of this, this is probably more of a comment than a question, but just, uh, prepping for the conversation we're gonna have in December, it's just, you see that, we all know that revenues have declined over the last four years as enrollment has declined as well, and Mr. Ballard made the point that expenditures have tracked that, which is good fiscal management, we, we made those changes. What was really striking to me was, um, recognizing that instruction expenditures have stayed constant roughly, we, we haven't actually taken money out of instruction where it seems to really have, we've had real reductions in student, uh, support services, and so I'm just curious, what, what is classified under support services? What, if that's where, you know, so we, we've reduced investments or expenditures in support services by 14 million dollars over the last four years? What, what, so what do, what do those cuts look like?
So those would be the 2000, um, functions, so that would be business services, uh, it's school administration, uh, admin, um, and it's, yeah, the other supports. So wouldn't, it would be those, that personnel tied to those groups, library, not necessarily librarians, but, um, the admin, in that admin section, so all of the clerical people who would fall into that group, um, all of those support personnel.
Okay.
More of our, more of our instructional spending and supports to scholars and, um, even personnel that directly, um, um, service scholars are, um, covered by and paid for using, uh, federal funds, title funds, and so, um, even as we've seen, you know, rightfully so, a decline in spending from the, um, our district maintenance funds, our general funds, um, we continue to, just based on the nature of, of the needs, continue to spend, um, you know, quite a bit more around, um, again, personnel, um, supplies, um, supports to, for coaching and professional development, um, and all that sort of thing out of title funding.
Great, thank you, Dr. Green.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Burke, Mr. Ballard.
And I did, I, he did correct me, they did find those items. They, they were able to provide documentation for those items.
So we do know where the, the MacBooks are?
Yes.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. All right, next, Board members, um, we will move on to our information, uh, action items. The first.
I'm sorry, before you go on, just to clarify though, those, can you come back to the mic? Those MacBooks are out of service at this point.
Yes, they were, yeah, they're out of service.
Very important that we have tracking of them, but I also want to underscore that they are old and out of service.
Okay, so, so effectively, these are items that would come to the Board as surplus?
Yes.
Okay.
So they, they would have come to you between the point that they did their testing and now.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Right.
Thank you, Doc.
Thought that might have been missed in.
Yeah, thank you.
It, it, I missed it.
Okay.
So thank you. And I think, Dr., uh, Mr. Burke, I think you're up next. Um, we're moving on to our information action items, and we have the request to approve the issuance of a tax and revenue anticipation note.
Thank you, Dr. Seavack, for bringing me back up so quickly.
Sure thing.
Uh, the administration requests approval of the, uh, resolution authorizing and directing the issuance of a tax and revenue anticipation note, otherwise known as a TAN, in the amount of 20 million dollars for the fiscal year 2022, 20, uh, 23. Uh, this is, um, this is citated because of the fact that most of our avalorm for our operations does not come in, um, until the months of January through May, and that's roughly 84% of the revenue, 85% of the revenues we need to operate the district. So this TAN affords us the opportunity to manage our cash flow, as I discussed, uh, during our finance committee meeting. Uh, cash flow management is, is critical at this time of year as we go into the December holidays. Uh, we are using, uh, looking to use or requesting permission to use Trustmark National Bank. They did provide us an interest rate of 5.3%. I will point out to you that cash costs more now than it did the last year we did this, um, we, the last time it, uh, we did this, it was only 0.97% increase, so you can, we are feeling the real effects of inflation and all the other things that our taxpayers are also feeling. Chris Espy with Espy Law, PLLC will do the work, and will, will cost not to exceed $7,500. He is experienced, he's done this with the district before, so we're looking forward to you accepting this recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Board members, are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second.
Mrs. Johnson has moved, Mrs. Thompson is second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Next week, thank you, Mr. Burke. Next, we have the request to ratify, uh, the approval, uh, to award RFP 2022, the district benchmark and formative assessment services. Our attorney, Dorian Turner, will present this information.
Board members, this item is actually being brought back to you a second time. It was brought to you initially at your October 4th meeting a couple of weeks ago, and as y'all know, the process is that when contracts come in, they come to me, I review them and negotiate them, and once I sign off on them, I send them to Ms. Williams who puts them on the agenda. Well, at this particular contract, what happened was is my office, I reviewed the contract and negotiated it, sent it to Ms. Williams, but I omitted to include the order form that just told you what exactly it is you were approving to purchase. So this is the same contract, but it now includes the order form to let you know what it was you approved back on October the 4th. So that document is now included in what's before you today for your consideration.
Thank you, Attorney Turner. Board members, are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I so moved.
Second.
Mr. Figurs has moved, Dr. Harrison is second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Next, we have the request to approve, uh, to award RFQ 2022 to Fahrenheit Creative Group. Uh, Dr. Cormick will present this information.
Good evening, Dr. Seavack, Dr. Green, members of the Board and JPS community. Um, the JPS administration is recommending the approval of Fahrenheit Creative Group, LLC, to offer project management and communication support to the JPS Heinz Early Learning Collaborative, uh, our program in support of a strong start commitment and strategic plan. Fahrenheit Creative Group will continue supporting our efforts, um, by providing a full range of project management, communication strategy, and graphic design, video production, and public relations services for a 20-month, 21-month period, um, commencing, uh, with your approval and concluding, um, in June 30, 2024. This long-range agreement will allow us to shore up enrollment, um, and commercials like those that you saw broadcasted, uh, on Comcast channel. We've been very excited to see, uh, our enrollment uptick, um, and we're very pleased that, um, we currently have about 850 students enrolled in the pre-kindergarten program, um, and so we want to continue those efforts, um, with the support of the Fahrenheit Creative Group.
Thank you, Dr. Cormick. Board members, are there any questions? I was very excited to see the commercial during Monday night football, so I'll just, just, just lift that up.
You're welcome.
Strategic marketing, exactly, for pre-k.
That was great. Is, is she one of our scholars?
She is, so Elijah Joy, you'll recall, uh, during Board member appreciation, saying for, for the Board, and we were excited to recruit her to participate in the video, and her family has been, uh, incredibly supportive, and she continues in the district, um, at, um, at Casey Elementary School, and so, um, we're, we're quite excited that, um, this is also part of a strategy to shore up enrollment, that we provide that strong start, they continue in kindergarten with us, and, and, uh, the sky is the limit.
Great, well, thank you, Dr. Cormick. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
I so moved. Second.
Mrs. Thompson has moved, Mrs. Johnson is second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Cormick. Uh, next, we'll invite Mrs. Marshall Thomas up to present the next two items, so Board members will just, will just run through questions with both of them, and then we'll take, uh, assuming there's no issues, we'll take a motion to approve them together. So the first item is the request to approve the agreement between the Professional Pharmacy and the Jackson Public School District. Mrs. Marshall Thomas.
Great evening, Dr. Seavack, Board members, Dr. Green. The administration seeks approval of the agreement between Professional Pharmacy Services and Jackson Public Schools to implement the pharmacy, the Professional Pharmacy Services program at Lanier High School. Professional Pharmacy Services utilizes experts in the fields of pharmacy to deliver focused, detailed, real-world curricula and experiences to scholars enrolled in the Health Sciences Academy and the Pharmacy Tech Pathway at Lanier. Um, JPS and PPS understand, um, that the knowledge students will obtain is a life-changing potential beyond obtaining a career as a pharmacy technician. Teaching pharmacology, um, to students can impact the students themselves and their families. Successful completion of, um, the Pharmacy Tech courses, um, will satisfy the Mississippi Pharmacy Technician Certification Board requirements and gain skills to prepare students to pursue other, um, careers in health sciences, whether it's nursing, as a physician, dentistry, et cetera. And so this unique program, um, structure incorporates not only intense curriculum, but also assistance in job placement. Um, the Health Service Academy at Lanier currently enrolls about 50 students, um, yearly, and so these scholars will complete, um, the program, and this will be the third career track there at, um, Lanier High School.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall Thomas. Board members, any questions or comments?
Sounds like a great program.
We're excited.
Very exciting. Okay, hearing them, we'll move on to Accelerate Mississippi.
Yes. Um, the administration recommends approval of the agreement between Accelerate Mississippi, which serves as the grant intermediary, and the Jackson Public School District to support Accelerate Mississippi Career Coach Initiative. Um, in consideration of the legislature's desire to create a career coaching program to support middle and high school scholars, um, and ensure that they're exposed, prepared, and connected to career avenues within and beyond the classroom setting, the grant intermediary and the district will employ strong partnerships with economic and business leaders, leveraging career coaches to target the alignment of student strengths with intentional academic and work-based learning in pursuit of meaningful professional, um, employment. And what Accelerate Mississippi will deliver on will be the funding for the career coaching and also support, um, with professional development.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Marshall Thomas. Board members, any questions?
And the career coach will be housed at the Career Development Center.
Great, thank you. And, um, thank you for sharing, um, the students who will be, um, working with this career coach. But how many students will the person have at one time?
250 is the max number that's allowed.
That's a lot of students.
It is, and we also have work-based learning, um, professionals at the Career Development Center as well, so.
Okay, so good.
We're not expecting them to take the whole gamut. We also have, uh, work-based learning professionals, um, at CDC.
Great, thank you. All right, um, we actually have one more, uh, which is the approval of the agreement for our ACT, American College Testing.
Yes, sir. Um, the administration presents for approval the memorandum of agreement between American, American College Testing, which is ACT, and the district. Um, under the terms of this MOU, um, the district will participate in the administration of the ACT district testing that enables our high school scholars to offer an additional ACT on the weekday, um, and is during our regular school hours. ACT on the weekday, and it's during our regular school hours. ACT district testing provides students the opportunity to assess their skills and level of college readiness in a familiar environment, additionally having an additional option for students to test. I did share some data where it states that students that take the ACT once, the average score is a 15.9, but those students who actually have, just take the test twice, the average is 17.5. So what we're trying to do is just to also ensure that our students have an extra opportunity to take the ACT in a familiar environment, don't have to worry about transportation, food, all of those things.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Marshall Thomas. Any questions?
I just think it's such a great thing with the ACT, all the other initiatives you mentioned, but we really, I think that's really going to be a boost for our students.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Great. Is there a motion to approve items D, E, and F?
Some moved.
Second.
Mrs. Thompson has moved, Mr. Figus is second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Marshall Thomas. Next, we have the request to approve the agreement with Jackson State University and Jackson Public School District to create a dual-credit, dual-enrollment, middle, college, high school program. And I believe Dr. Evans is going to present this information.
Good evening, board members, board press, and Dr. Green. The administration recommends the approval of the memorandum of understanding with Jackson State University and Jackson Public School District to offer dual-credit, dual-enrollment courses beginning the 2023-2024 school year. The purpose of this agreement is to support the establishment of a middle-college-school innovation partnership with Jackson State University. The middle-college dual-enrollment courses will be held on the campus of Jackson State. The mission of this partnership is to create a grow-your-own pipeline of certified and highly qualified math educators for our school district. This program seeks to identify students who have demonstrated high mathematic aptitude to participate in a teacher-development program which leads to earning university credits. Upon graduation from high school, Jackson State has agreed to provide the resources to facilitate continuation of this program for free to yield students earning a bachelor's degree in teacher education. So this memorandum of understanding makes the program accessible to schools and families in the community who wish to participate. If approved, applications will be accepted during our special programs application window, which begins on next Monday, November 7 through December 14. The district is seeking to enroll 15 to 20 scholars for the first cohort to begin Fall of 2023.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Evans. Board members, any questions, comments?
I have a question, Dr. Evans. This is really exciting initiative. Did I read somewhere in the fine print that our students would then, after attending JSU, would become certified teachers for JPS in mathematics?
Absolutely. That's the whole aim of this program. What's really cool about this initiative, and we've gotten very positive feedback from the Mississippi Department of Education, is that we sat around the table and thought about, you know, a professional problem of practice. You know, every year we have about 20 math vacancies, so what could we do? We talked about innovation, and there are these opportunities to create an innovative program to solve a problem. Actually, Mrs. Marshall Thomas identified math as an area that we could address, and so our job was to make this work. And so what we would do is offer actually a contingent contract to 11th graders, where they agree to come back to the district to teach for three years upon graduation. And if they do that, Jackson Public Schools will cover their dual enrollment fees, but Jackson State will allow them to continue the final two years at no cost for tuition.
That's excellent. I was curious about the years, three years. That's very good. Thank you.
That wouldn't actually have a degree at the, you know, I mean, like with the early college, though.
There's no degree in the middle, so they just complete the first two years of the math education program while they're in high school, 11th and 12th grade, and then they continue on to complete the final two years upon graduation from high school.
I got you. Very good.
This is very exciting. Thank you for the very helpful table to just share the differences, but also the opportunities at both of the programs. And that was very helpful. And it's really inspiring. A lot of people talk about growing your own, or we just got to get things done earlier. I mean, this is real concrete action, so congratulations.
We believe this will become a national model, and it's going to start right here in Jackson Public Schools.
That's excellent. It's really excellent.
All right.
This whole agenda of items is so rich to me for this meeting.
All right. I think there's going to be a race to make a motion on this one.
Some moved.
Well done. Dr. Harrison has moved, and Mrs. Thompson is second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Evans.
Thank you all.
All right. Next, we have the request to approve our agreement with Instruction Partners, RFP 2022 Pool Partners in the Jackson Public School District. This is for content area support, job embedded professional development, which is associated with Meeting Standard 20 and administrative and instructional coaching. Dr. Regina Scott will present this information, our executive director of school support.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Superintendent Dr. Green, board president, Dr. Sevak, board members, and JPS family. The administration recommends review and approval of a lead partner contract with Instruction Partners Incorporated to provide administrative and instructional coaching support to key elementary school, Span Elementary, Cardozo, and Kirksey Middle Schools, and also in partnership with the Office of Teaching and Learning.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Board members, any questions, comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Second.
Mrs. Thompson has moved, Dr. Harrison is second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next, we have our consent agenda items for finance. Mr. Burke, I actually do have a question. I am going to invite you up. And so it's specifically in reference to item C, and Dr. Green, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you on this. Okay, Attorney Turner. Attorney Turner, could you share with the board what you shared with me earlier in reference to item C?
Well, board members, just in the spirit of continuing to ensure that you are aware of what it is you're approving, I initially just had some questions about the procurement process, and I'm completely satisfied with the procurement process. But what I did find out is that in the information that's being presented to you, the administration bid the purchase of these items on a per-device cost. So what you have is a bid tab that shows you what the device cost is. What I'm not sure y'all understood is that the administration may be ordering a whole lot of these. Dr. Scott told me it might be something like in the 90s, maybe more, maybe less, which would make this just a very significant financial purchase. So I just wanted to be sure from an informational purpose that you understood that this is not a, you know, $190,000 transaction you're approving. It could be a multimillion-dollar improvement. There are no legal issues with that. It's just that the administration is in the process, I think, of determining how many devices they'll actually need. So we don't know that number at this exact time.
Thank you, Attorney Turner. So, board members, any questions? And it's my understanding we have done this in the past. An example would be with the Chromebook purchase.
Okay. Shall we pass it now and then deal with the funds needed later? Is that, it's a two-process?
Well, we can absolutely provide to you the funding available for it, right, and up to number. But, you know, we can also come to you with clearer numbers as to what we expect to purchase and the costs associated there.
That's.
You know, we're trying to move a few trains at the same time. We want to be thoughtful and meaningful as to what do we actually need, and that process takes a minute, as well as the approval of the contract and all of that, so.
No, I understand. Thank you.
So let me offer some context. So this was bid, and Attorney Turner is correct, it was bid at a per-unit cost because each of the schools controlled their own purchasing. The money's budgeted at their school based on their student enrollment, based on a per-pupil amount. They can order one now, 10 later, so it's not a cumulative purchase at this point. But we bid it because at some point, she's right, it could exceed the threshold that requires to bid. So you bid it on the front end, if they buy 10, it'll be $10,000, whatever it would be, and that cumulative total could wind up being $250,000. What's budgeted right now across all the schools is approximately $600,000. So each school would make their determination based on whether they like it, whether they want to use it. But the number that was put in the RFP was an estimate, when they asked principals what their thought process was, a total of 94. So they responded with a price based on the purchase of 94, and that becomes a unit cost that's set for future purchases, if that helps out and provides a little more context.
And this is, and it's, is it title dollars that will fund these?
Title dollars. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, board members? Okay, thank you, Attorney Turner, for just sharing that, and Mr. Burke and Dr. Scott.
I just have a question about, Dr. Regina Scott or Clay?
Clay Scott.
Clay Scott. Thank you. Because I know in the other one it said Scott, and this one it says Clay.
That was it.
That was it. I have that same question, too, sometimes.
Great. Well, board members, is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second.
Mrs. Johnson has moved, Mr. Figus is second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Next, board members, we'll, I'll request a motion to approve the remaining, is that just C that we approved, or will that account for the agenda?
Oh, I thought you were doing all of them. You just pulled out for questions.
Okay. Then if that will count for all of them, then we will take that as all of them, and we will move on to our consent agenda items for general. Board members, we have all had the opportunity to review the material previously, and an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, is there a motion to approve our consent agenda items for general?
Some moved.
Second.
Dr. Harrison has moved, Mrs. Thompson is second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. The motion carries. Next, we have our consent agenda items for personnel. All of the information has been provided to, previously, we had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda for personnel?
Some moved. Second.
Mrs. Johnson has moved, Mrs. Thompson is second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a consideration for executive session?
Yes, sir.
There is. Okay. So board members, we'll need a motion to close the meeting to consider executive session.
I know that we close the meeting to consider executive session.
Dr. Harrison has moved, Mr. Figus is second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening.